... United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, on its own, under God, in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution of Justice and of our Constitution. (pause) (noise) 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 (pause) (noise)
Yeah, I have a question. I think I may need to do it. On March 18th, the first item is our 5C tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
(noise) 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 (noise)
(noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise)
(noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise)
(noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise) (noise)
So Chair, can they speak both?
Oh, yes, they can speak tonight and on the 18th, yes.
(noise)
So I just wanted to make, okay, I wanted to make an announcement. This is Kyle's final planning commission meeting. It's finally here. So she's been with the city for 35 incredible years with the city of Santa Monica. She has been serving this commission for just about that long and is witness to 35 years of development history and we tap into that knowledge often. She's our other foul keepers, I guess you can say. So we did a little math and that accounts to about 800 meetings total, including the 33 infamous hearings on the zoning ordinance subject. That's 3,500 hours in the council chamber and other versions of it like tonight. So tonight is going to be ours 3,501 and 3,502. So let's make it a good one. So Kyle, I just want to say thank you for being the godmother of city planning and on behalf of all of the staff here tonight, thank you for all the...
(applause) (pause) (noise) 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 (pause)
I'm going to go around the dais and have a commissioner speak if they'd like. So why don't we start with you?
Yeah, first of all. (noise) 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 So, thank you because you're really the glue that keeps all these gears and all lined up correctly with your patience with all of our requests and continuous crises and dealing with all kinds of public questions, influence, screaming and yelling and all that. You're just grace under pressure. You've really been exemplary. Thank you for standing at very high bar.
Hi Kyle. Thank you for recycling all my pens and for all of those amazing chair agendas that you make so that you don't mess up publicly when we're on TV. That's amazing stuff and for all of the things that you found and for all the printed copies of things I wanted, which I know is controversial, but I like paper. And I just feel like you're the mother of us all. You just take care of us and that's a really wonderful thing. And I hope that moving forward, you find wonderful, satisfying and exciting things to do in your life and that you have a fabulous next chapter.
So, we kind of live in a moment where government is decried and people's service is not recognized, but 37 years with the City Council of Santa Monica and 31 years with the Planning Commission is exactly what public service is all about. And it means a lot. It's meant a lot to every one of the planning commissioners that has been here for those 31 years. And it's meant a lot to the city and it's meant a lot to the people who live in the city because they don't even realize that the quality of what you've done translates to the life that they lead because you've been here as part of all the zoning updates and the redoing of town plans and the Birmingham Action Plan and the this plan and the that plan. When I got on this commission 10 years ago and over 200 meetings, you were already 600 meetings ahead. But 9,000 pages came over and it was get it read by Wednesday. And it was all the old plans and everything that needed to be looked at and thought about. And we've added a couple thousand more pages of plans. And all of that comes about because of the work that you've done. And so tonight, that work gets some small, salivary recognition from us and from our community and from all the people that you work with, the staff of this city council. It's a very high-quality city council, very high-quality staff, and we're right at the top of it. So thanks on behalf of everyone here and our community. It's been a great job.
So, one of the newer planning commissioners, I've only been around for a fraction of those meetings, but one thing that hasn't been mentioned yet, and there is no public comment tonight because this is a special meeting, but for all of those years, Kyle, you have been the guardian of public comment as well. And you have been the person who has ensured that the chits, the people who walk into a chamber not sure for the first time, perhaps they've spoken to a commission or a board, they're not sure who to talk to, what to say. You're the person they meet and who gives them encouragement and who makes sure that we up here take the time to hear what everyone has to say. And you do it in a way that I think has given the planning commission a reputation for being a place, as Mario mentioned, of civil discourse, respect, not always agreement, but a place where we can talk and be heard. All of us, we're the public. So I want to thank you for that. Your career, not just taking care of us, but for being the steward of real public input and discourse as we've done with.
Hi. We're like so special overnight. Thank you for, you know, helping me through my first month of being a planning commissioner and for being so responsive and responsible to the people up here and to everyone in the public. And I'm sorry when I come back to work there, especially after I hear all these beautiful things. And I hope you find a lot of satisfaction in whatever you decide to do.
Kyle, for those of you over 90 in the room, you may remember that I was on the planning commission in the 1980s. And Kyle was there. And so imagine my surprise when I came back to the commission three and a half years ago and there she still is. One might wonder if she ever leaves City Hall. I just love you. I mean, for me, you are family, you are continuity, you are the primo example of public service. I know that it's hard to be in the public service these days because there's a lot of disdain for whatever reason for people who actually work for the public sector, but it's a wonderful way to spend your life professionally. And I was in public service for 35 years and I'm so proud of what I did and you should be proud of what you've done. It is really hard to imagine going on, I feel like I'm orphaned, going on without you. But welcome to Melissa and she's got some big shoes to fill. And I know that you brought her up to speed and I just, I don't know what else to say. It's going to be, it's definitely the same without you here. Your humor, your understanding, at least Kenny understands our humor, will be greatly missed. And stay in touch. Actually, I had an idea the other day. If there's a vacancy on the planning commission in the future, Kyle could move into my ADU. And a pluck. Because she probably knows more than anybody sitting up here about the planning commission business. So welcome to retirement. It took me a while to get used to it, but it's wonderful. You can stand and have coffee in the morning and read the paper and you're not admirable to anybody but yourself. And I actually, we have, the commission has a gift we'd like to give you tonight as a sign of gratitude. (noise) 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 Okay, so our first item on the agenda is item 5A. And it is a variance, minor modification, fence stall, hedge modification, Bucarpi at Ford, Love and Other Park Boulevard. And we have three chips. Clear the staff report, please?
Ex parte.
Oh, ex parte, I'm sorry. Let's get that. Commissioner Fondin-Arty?
I drive by that site almost every day.
I walk, drive and live near the site, although not within the video search question. I also was very involved in the designation of the Fourth Street corner district, which is the area of the effects. So I have an especially deep awareness of the conditions in that area.
Can I drive by the site?
I can do that.
I can drive by the site regularly, but I did not make a special trip. I'm also told that there is still no sound on the hearing.
I also drive by the site.
Clear the staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gina Seelock. I'll be presenting the project for tonight. It is a project at 411 Ocean Park Boulevard. It's a variance request, project number 19 ENT 0121. It's a minor modification request, which is project number 19 ENT 0357. And it's a wall modification request, which is project number 19 ENT 0122. Well, we got to slide number two. All right, this is a project location. As you can see, outlined in the red, 411 Ocean Park Boulevard is in the Ocean Park Low Density Residential District. The parcel is 2,905 square feet with approximate dimensions of 40.9 by 72.6. The applicant is requesting approval of three variances, two minor modifications and one fence wall hedge modification in conjunction with the project. The variance includes a reduced front yard setback from 15 to 7 and 1/2 feet, a reduced rear yard setback from 15 to 5 feet, and increased parcel coverage from 50% to 59.36%. The major modification is a request for two things, which is reduction of a typical garage, reducing the two standard parking spaces to one standard and one compact. In addition, the modification requests the turning radius to allow the two cars to park side by side from a substandard 15-foot wide alley. So as you can see here, there is an alley on the side of the parcel and the turning radius is from center line of alley. So the applicant has widened the garage doors to make that accessible and to get the two cars in as designed. The fence wall hedge modification is for an existing front retaining wall. As you can see here on the slide, it goes actually along the front and along the side of the parcel existing. Portions of this will be rebuilt. And in the corner parcel of the southeast corner, there will be a reduction in height to comply with our standards for the hazardous visual obstruction. So in that corner, you'll see a reduced height to be no more than two feet in that corner. What we did was take a look at a study area along the ramp. So Ocean Park Boulevard in the middle here goes straight through. Fourth Street, which is about in the center of that study area, is much higher elevation. So those ramps are on ramps and exiting ramps to get to and from Fourth Street. And you can see the study area encompasses basically from Fifth Street to the east, a little past Third Street to the west, and mostly contiguous parcels along that ramp. There are 14 parcels in this particular study area that we've looked at. So the existing site conditions, as you can see here, is the existing house. The square footage of the house is 932 square feet. It's one story, it was built in the 20s. The existing setback is inches in the front yard, as you can see in that diagram where the red line is the parcel lines and the existing house basically from the front and along the alley side encroaches to the setback line. And outlined in the back is a carport, which is just a roof structure for two parking spaces in the back. This, we put in for a little bit of historic context. This is a photo taken in 1969. As best I can tell, this is near the completion, at least of this particular on-ramp that goes up to Fourth Street. And the subject parcel, as you can see in the staff report, has, it's about 3/4 of the way up this particular ramp off to the right. But this shows you the work that was being done back in 69. So the proposed project is a new 2,949 square foot single-family residence. If approved, the project would result in a two-story dwelling with attached garage and would comprise 1,090 square feet on the first floor, 1,093 square feet on the second floor. It would include a 386 square foot garage and a 380 square foot basement equipment area. So this is a proposed rendering that shows the existing retaining wall and changes that were being proposed. It also demonstrates that corner elevation where the wall would be cut down, as I suggested, and just gives you a 3D kind of rendering of the proposed structure. These models help kind of explain where the massing and structures are in relation to other adjacent properties. As you can see, off to the north, there's a large, basically three-story apartment building. Off to the west is a smaller property that fronts Fourth Street that's now in the historic Fourth Street specific historic area. And this lower, this photo on the lower portion shows the interior kind of courtyard configuration that the architect has designed. And the structure kind of in the front of that is a garage that butts the property. So the floor plans are basically fairly simple. The garage is off to the rear and there is a one-bedroom that abuts the garage that you can see along the rear. The living space is on the ground floor, bedrooms and kind of utility areas like laundry on the second floor with baths. There is a outdoor courtyard adjacent to the master bedroom. And there is the roof plan that has a proposed roof deck and stairwell access. This gives you another bit of context for the existing development with the rendering imposed into the image. You can see the ramp from the opposite ramp. That's where this photo is taken. And you can see that the upslope of the parcel, that ramp is about 7%. It goes up to Fourth Street. So you can see the grade differentials. As far as the neighborhood context, this area is developed primarily with one- and two-story multifamily buildings and six single-family dwellings. There is little visual cohesion within the existing study area since the ramps created such a severe reduction or substandard conditions of existing parcels. The request is for additional parcel coverages largely to accommodate the two-car garage, which is a condition found on other properties in the neighborhood. Additionally, the request to reduce the front and rear setbacks for the two-story would not be unusual within this context since there is no prevailing consistency for the front or rear setbacks for lots along the north side of Ocean Park Boulevard between Third Street and Fifth Street. So, want to talk a little bit about the request for reduced setbacks. So what we tried to demonstrate is where today you would have the requirement for a 15-foot front and a 15-foot rear yard setback, as shown in the two horizontal lines on the front and rear. The blue area would comprise basically the buildable envelope. The proposed project has complied with the required four-foot side yards. So in this slide, what this is showing is basically what the applicant's request is, to reduce the front setback to 7 and 1/2 and the rear setback to 5. And what you'll notice is, again, the property to the north, that's a side parcel line of a large apartment building. And the property to the west is a, right now, one unit in the historic district with a garage in the corner. And then affronting the eastern side is the alley, the substandard alley. And then the ramp, of course, is on the south side. What we provided for in the report was a series of charts to demonstrate some of the unusual characteristics. This one particularly shows the inconsistency of widths and depths of parcels. We also noted where they front, meaning what is the narrowest portion of the parcel on those particular lots, because some of them are side lots or some of them front the ramp. Again, this particular subject parcel is one of three on the north ramp. It's actually four, I'm sorry, but it has access from the ramp to the alley. And you can see in this particular slide what the average width and depth of each parcel is. And this particular parcel is below those averages by a substantial amount. The parcel is irregular in all dimensions, so it has no right angles. So, the other request, or the variance request, is for additional parcel coverage. The parcel coverage requirements for the zoning districts in the OP2 section don't take into consideration what the existing conditions are. So no matter what the size of the parcel, the shape of the parcel, linear length, topography, the standards are dictated specifically. And the request for additional parcel coverage comes primarily because of the request for the two-car garage. So by providing the garage, that is a design that requires us to include in parcel coverage, also giving the definition of what should be included, we have an interior porch, as you can see in the middle of the slide. On the second floor, that's covered. On the first floor, it is not. So that is included in parcel coverage. And at the front, a similar characteristic where there's an open porch, but the floor above covers it. So those three areas make up the requests primarily for the additional parcel coverage. So in this particular slide, we've demonstrated the average size of the parcels. As you can see from the highlighted area, the subject parcel is As you can see from the highlighted area, the subject parcel is two thousand nine hundred and six square feet. The average parcel size is five thousand five hundred and twenty-three square feet. So it's substantially less. There are four parcels in the particular subject area that are less than three thousand square feet. If a parcel was being developed today, the minimum size is five thousand. So I'd like to go through the very specific findings. Variances are considered to be at a level where you have to make findings about the special circumstances or the exceptional characteristics of the property. Additionally, you have to make findings about what would be detrimental or injurious to the property improvements in the general vicinity, that the strict application of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would not, would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, and the strict application of the provisions of this ordinance would result in deprivation or use of enjoyment of the property. This is highlighted in the report. There are ten variance findings that have to be made, and those are listed in the recommended statement of official action. The development of the exceptional characteristics, I'll just run through some of the general issues that we identified. The, when you take into consideration what could be developed on the site, fifty-two percent of the parcel is undevelopable, meaning they can't even meet the minimum fifty percent. So the setbacks would preclude them from getting to the standard for the zoning ordinance. The request for the nine point three-six additional parcel area includes, as I mentioned, the seventy-square-foot front porch, a two-hundred-and-five second floor over an open walkway, and the three hundred and eighty-six square-foot garage. Additionally, since the project is being considered together, there are modification findings. This is for, again, the reduced interior garage dimension and the turning radius. So the modification findings are that the site conditions, the location of the existing improvements or architecture, preclude basically the ability to meet the standard, that the modification is in, is consistent with the general plan, and the intent and the purpose of the zoning district is in substantial compliance, that the parcel will not adversely be affect, will not adversely affected as a result of the approval or conditional approval, and it will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of persons residing or working on the site. Lastly, there are findings for fence wall hedge modification, so that when making an approval, you have to be compatible or similar to other structures in the neighborhood. It would not be detrimental or injurious to the property in the general vicinity, and the modification would not impair the integrity of the district in which it's located. As part of our, taking this project forward, we mailed notices to property owners and tenants within a seven hundred and fifty-foot radius. We advertised in the Santa Monica Daily and Press, and as of today, I received no comments in opposition or in favor of the proposal. I'd just like to go over again some of the areas of highlight. We had, in some of the charts, listed ten of the fifteen, ten of the fourteen dwelling units within the study area exceed three thousand square feet, and the average parcel size is five thousand five hundred and twenty-three square feet. Four of the fourteen properties within the study area have parcel depths in excess of seventy-three feet, which is the subject parcel. The subject parcel is one of two parcels along the north Ocean Park Boulevard ramp that fronts the ramp and has side parcel line adjacent to a dead-end, dead-end substandard alley. That alley was created early on in the tract development of the parcel, but leads one-third up the block, so there was no turnaround. If approved, the proposed project of two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine square feet is within the range of existing dwellings on the subject study area. So the planning commission has alternative actions that they can take. They can continue the project for specific reasons, or they can articulate revised findings and conditions to approve or deny without prejudice the subject application. In conclusion, we are recommending approval of the variance, the minor modification, the fence wall hedge modification, based on the findings subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report and the draft statement of official action. I'd just like to read the last part, which is that the requested variances are to reduce the front and rear setbacks and increase the parcel coverage for a project for a new single-family dwelling. The proposed reduction of the front and rear setback is due to existing parcel depth of seventy-three linear feet, which is below the hundred and seven feet of depth for the study area. There would be little or no impact adjacent to the parcels, since there is no prevailing front or rear setback for those parcels affronting on the north side of Ocean Park Boulevard ramp. The two abutting properties at twenty-five, twenty-five Fourth Street and twenty-five, nineteen Fourth Street have frontages along Fourth Street. Both are located at higher elevations, and both cases have side or property, side or rear property lines perpendicular to the subject site or the rear parcel line. The additional parcel coverage is warranted, specifically the fifty percent parcel coverage is a practical difficulty and unnecessary hardship for the subject property, given the size of the lot at two thousand nine hundred and five square feet. The minor modification and wall modifications are supported by staff and will allow the new development to retain the existing wall and provide a front height consistent with other properties in the general neighborhood. The minor modification will allow reduced interior garage dimensions and modified ingress and egress radius, thereby permitting an enclosed garage, which is typical amenity for a new single-family home. As analyzed in this report, we believe we can make the findings. We're recommending the planning commission to take the action to approve the project as conditioned, because it affords the property, they build a new residential unit comprising of similar, comprise comparable to similar dwelling units in the neighborhood area. So that concludes my report.
Thank you for your presentation. So for us, that's exactly what you said. We have a portable and money in hand.
Boy, you've earned your keep tonight. Thank you. Yeah, you can stay. Yeah, hey, that's right. It's all under my control now. So are there questions of staff? I knew it. Commissioner Fresco.
How, well, did you measure the existing wall?
Hello? Hello? I can't hear it, okay. Did I measure the existing wall? I walk by there almost every Sunday, and the existing wall comes up to about right here, so it's not existing at five feet, but I didn't physically go out there and take the measure.
Well, I did.
And what did you find?
It is forty-eight inches, and it is at the corner, and it is thirty-six inches at the, where it meets the property line of the historic property. So in the finished proposal, how high is the wall proposed to be on the alley?
I don't have a detail in terms of the plans. I just took the applicant's request, so I'll let them better answer that. But we did condition the, the corner, as I mentioned, to provide for the line of sight, so that can be no higher than two feet in a five-by-five triangle, and I'll let them explain if they're going to continue some of that along the side alley property line.
So currently on the side alley, it's forty-eight inches, which is non-conforming, so we don't actually know if this is, proposal is retaining a non-conforming wall without a modification or not. Is that right?
Well, it's three, it's bigger than three and a half.
Yeah, it's forty-eight inches, I measured it. If it's going to stay forty-eight inches, this mod would have to include that, the side wall too, and we would have to consider that. And if it's going to be reduced to forty-two inches, then that is, then we wouldn't have to, but we need to know.
And that would be, that would be within the proposed seven-and-a-half-foot front yard, because the, the height is measured only in that front yard.
Right, but it's forty-eight inches all the way to the corner.
Yeah. And remember, the retaining wall was built by the city.
Well, it's, anyway, okay, so, I know I'm being a little obnoxious, but did you look at the report for the historic district that's next to it?
I know where the properties are, I did look at the property boundary.
Just because there's a lot of information in that report about the existing conditions of the properties on the ramps and which ones were impacted by the ramp and which ones weren't. So I just, I, I'll share more of that when it's my time to expound, but those are my questions, unless, I'm, sorry.
Thank you. The applicant is here, as is one member of the public, so I'm good, I don't know what order you want to, thank you very much, we can have the applicant speak. Glasses would help. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this, is this on? Yeah, I guess it is. First of all, this is a great report. I appreciate all the research that went into showing the comparable properties. If this were an R1 site, and this is a new building, they could presumably not have a covered garage, is that correct?
Yes.
And does that ability, not to have a covered garage, extend to the rear half of an OP-2 project if it's, you see where I'm going with this?
Well, yes.
So you.
They could have, but.
Is it just because? My, my question is, as I understand it, multifamily properties, in the rear half of the lot, you can have uncovered parking.
You can actually have parking now up to the face of the building. It doesn't have to be in the rear half anymore, on a multifamily.
In the multifamily?
Yes.
So they have that option of, if they were to exercise it, not to have covered parking?
Yeah, and I think we mentioned that in the report.
Right. Then the second question I have is when the parking was shrunk, the way I'm reading this, if this was a single-family residence, it would have to be a twenty-foot-wide parking garage.
Correct. Standard garages are twenty-foot wide.
But we put in something that is seven-and-a-half-feet-wide instead of eight-and-a-half-feet-wide, meaning we put in a compact car.
Correct.
And so it would shrink from twenty-feet-wide to nineteen-feet-wide, but they seem to have gone to eighteen-feet-wide.
Eighteen is the interior dimension.
Eighteen is the interior dimension?
Eighteen by eighteen, that's the request.
No, no, I know that's what they're requesting, I'm asking what's required.
Required today, if you're building a garage, is twenty-foot-wide.
Right, so they're asking for more than just a compact space, they're also asking for a reduction in, in the door-opening space on one of those units of a foot.
That's right, so they're proposing to widen that garage door to be able to access into those two spaces.
Yeah, the, okay, the widening of the garage doors has to do with the backup into the alley, not necessarily to opening the doors, okay, that's what I needed to know, thank you.
So is that all the commissioner questions we have? All right. The first speaker is Scott Flax. Unless you would, unless you want to go in the other order, David Alk? Which one of you is the applicant?
Chairperson Lambert, I'm the applicant, Jean-Paul Buchanan.
I'm sorry, you're the applicant and your name is?
Jean-Paul Buchanan.
Okay, there's not a shit here, but it doesn't have. Okay, all right, that's, okay, that's fine. So why don't you proceed?
I can't hear him, I'm sorry, he has a song.
Chairperson Lambert, commissioners, my name is Jean-Paul Buchanan. I'm the applicant, owner, and occupant of 411 Ocean Park Boulevard. First of all, I'd like to thank Gina for all her hard work on this report, and I just would like to introduce myself. I have been living in this neighborhood at Ocean Park for the last eight years with my partner Catherine. We bought this house six years ago, and in those six years, we have been thinking about what we could do that was, would fit with the lot and be respectful to our neighbors. And in that, in that time, we, we had met with our neighbors, and we'd met Lou and our architect, and we came up with a design. Before we began this process, before we even applied for the demolition permit, we met with our neighbors, we showed them the plans, and let them know that we were to answer any questions or hear any concerns that they had. That meeting was December sixteenth, twenty eighteen. In that time, we have kept in contact with our neighbors as people moved in, we have made ourselves available to answer any questions or address any concerns they have. And we, we believe our interactions with the neighbors and the length of time that we lived in the neighborhood really gave us perspective about where the noise was and what features this lot had that we could use and utilize and make the impact on people around. And we were lucky enough to meet Lou and our architect, who then put our ideas to realization. And with that, I would like to introduce Lou.
Is this on? I'm Lou and Worthheimer, the architect. So I met Jean-Paul and Catherine, I met Jean-Paul and Catherine in the summer of twenty eighteen, and it turned out that we shared, having partially grown up in a southern Spanish fishing village in the province of Malaga, and it kind of abbreviated our aesthetics, and we immediately dived into some images for their house, which, which I'm calling a, which I'm calling a southern Mediterranean island refuge. And these slides here are just some images of the kinds of colors and materials and textures and plant life that we would like our home to look like. I don't think I can change the slide, so. So the, the rendering that you saw of the corner that is part of this presentation, that's giving you a sense of the playfulness of the volumetric play and trying to come up with a language that works with this incredibly irregular, constrained site. In answer to your question, Commissioner Fresco, the wall on the side of the alley In answer to your question, Commissioner Fresco, the wall on the side of the alley is proposed to stay its existing height because it's actually retaining the land behind it. If that becomes some big issue, we could discuss lowering it the six inches, but it would be preferable not to have to do that. The, the only part of the wall that we're proposing to extend is really to level out the front yard to the west of the gate. And, and then after the gate, it all goes back down to the existing height and then lowers in, for the view, triangle at the alley sidewalk. So the, the back to the irregular site and what this kind of architecture allows for stepping volumes, intimate spaces that give a kind of sense of scale to this hodgepodge along what I call a low-impact freeway, freeway off-ramp. I try to imagine it being actually a wall of, at an ocean, and that this is a storm wall, and this is the village that would actually be protecting the, the houses. It sort of helps me romanticize it. And then you've been through these plans before, but I just want to point out the interior courtyard, because it's really key to all of our requests, which is, this lot is kind of a pit. I, I don't mean it's the pits, but it's a pit. It's, it's sunken down in the back against the parking garage of the condominium. The alley, which is mostly for the neighbors and trash trucks, is not a particularly sightly alley. The front of the house is on an off-ramp or on-ramp, however you want to talk about it. And the other side, the west side, is really the only side that has any air and light. And so it just became abundantly clear with these small dimensions that we needed to create a little interior oasis. And that's what we did. We have a little covered porch, a little dunking pool, pond, fountain, sort of serves as everything. And all the rooms at the lower level relate around it as they do at the upper level. And the parking for us, or the rear yard setback, is really a parody of parking for parking. The parking of the condominium, which is five feet away from the, the property line, we're locating our park, parking five feet away from the property line. And then everything above that is set back to the code-required fifteen-foot setback. So it's really just the lower level, primarily the, the parking with the little guest room beyond. The, the roof deck, all within the code height requirements. We, we designed it to be a very small little roof deck, taking advantage of the ocean view that you would have from up there. There are roof decks around the neighborhood, the condominium project or rental unit project on the other side of the alley, they all have individual roof decks. We put the stair tower to the back to provide privacy from the condo to the roof deck and vice versa, so that people didn't feel like they were exposed. The small kind of California basement for utilities due to the small site of the property. And then these section cuts through the middle of the house, looking at the courtyard and the soaking pond pool, through the kitchen, through the master bathroom basement, the vaulted ceilings, the stepping, the low ceiling heights, all in keeping with this kind of Mediterranean, southern Mediterranean island vernacular, the side, the- Malaga, Malaga, Malaga. And then this is the interior, so the west side showing the interior of the courtyard. And then you saw these models, so I'm not going to go through those again. You got that, you got that, and that's the end of my presentation. The communal talking stick.
Does anyone have questions of the applicant before we get to the public?
So, excuse me, Lewin, mister, I forgot your last name. Mister Lewin.
Lewin's good.
I just wanted to clarify. So your variance is to raise the four feet to five feet, only up to where that gate is, and then it will angle, well, it will go level down and it will meet the existing height of the wall, which is about three feet where the existing stair is. Is that right? No, I didn't, I, yeah, see, I knew I didn't understand yet.
So right now, you see this line here, this dotted line? That's the existing wall. So we're asking if you take that existing point here-
Excuse me, sir? We need you to speak into this, so it's on the-
All right. Well, I can't, this cord won't reach. So the, we're just asking to level off on the front of the house, that wall.
I'm sorry, I just, so this is going to stay the same? That's my question.
Correct, yes.
And then it's going to get higher to here?
Yes.
And then this down here is the same?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I assume this can be a net-zero building, because it's a brand-new, single-family residence?
What do you mean by a net-zero?
Meaning it'll generate, generate as much energy as it consumes.
It's going to conform to all of the Title XXIV energy calculations and Santa Monica City energy requirements.
Right, which include net-zero for, for these types of building. And the reason I raise it is you might want to look at where your solar collectors are placed, because they're actually effectively shaded, partially shaded by your building, and seriously shaded by that nasty thing next door. So I'm just telling you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to call members of the public to speak. Scott Flax. And I don't know, frankly, if that microphone's working or not, so.
I'm looking for the telephone.
Oh, great. Well, does anyone have a TV screen?
Hi, yes. My name is Scott Flax. I live at 2532 Fifth Street.
A little bit louder.
I, I live at 2532 Fifth Street and have lived there for twenty-two years, sharing the alley that has been part of this discussion and, and presentation. And I, I just, I want to be able to add the voice that the homeowners and the architects have been extremely inclusive of us as neighbors and everyone around us, really graciously explaining and hearing any concerns. And the, the overall design, from my point of view, is, is that it's exceptional and would add a tremendous value to the visual texture of that particular ramp, which we all have romanticized in many different forms. And I think they, they, they will bring something very special to us. And I personally work with this architecture firm, and I have always seen their attention to site as a priority, and its understanding and how it folds into everything around them. So I'm hoping that it meets with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Alk.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Nina.
Yes.
Oh, can you hear me?
Just shout.
Okay, just be loud. Okay, great, will do. David Alk, and I support the project, and I'm asking you to approve it as requested. And I live directly adjacent to the study area that was looked at, also off the alley. Our garages are maybe twenty feet apart, and I think that this will be a big improvement to the neighborhood. It's a difficult property to be working with. I think it was maybe affected when they took over from when they expanded Ocean Park Boulevard, the history, maybe that caused this to be such a small property where the house actually overhangs the alley. I'm not sure, I don't know that, but it's interesting to see it's such a difficult piece of property. And I believe that they've taken this and really turned it into a beautiful design. I feel like it's appropriate scale of the property, given the neighboring properties that are around. I actually think that the setbacks that are proposed are actually, to me, an improvement over what is currently existing there, because the house is currently towering, you know, over the alley, and a lot of people walk down and use that alley. So I actually think the way that this kind of steps back, it'll actually be much more appealing. I love just the step-back design also of the home as well, from Ocean Park Boulevard, where they've made the first portion lower, and then it gets higher as it goes back. And I think that they've really done a beautiful articulation of the facade. They've, they've really considered the impact that it's going to be on the other neighbors. And just also, like Scott, I wanted to confirm that the, the owners have been very kind and very inclusive and invited us over to meetings. They had multiple meetings, and there were fifteen or twenty people at one of the meetings, and it was unanimous support there, so just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry Rubin.
Thank you very, very much, Jerry Rubin. I live in the Ocean Park area on Fourth Street, just a few blocks from the project. Walk past there all the time and think it'll be an asset to the community. First, I want to thank you, Kyle, for all your service. Just take a second.
I'm just going to miss you, Jerry.
Absolutely. One of the, one of the sweetest people at City Hall and so professional. It's hard to believe that you got this job when you're only four or five years old, though. Now, that's pretty good. Anyhow, I, I think the, it's a beautiful design, and everything that the homeowner and the architect are talking about, and all this, and the staff report, this sounds logical, and everything that they're requesting. I don't think it'll hurt the community at all. I, I just want to say, I hope you approve it. It seems that the staff is approving it. It doesn't seem like any letters of opposition came in whatsoever, so I just urge full support for it. Think it'll be a real app, a real asset to the Ocean Park area and to Santa Monica in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, that concludes public comment. I think the applicant has time to rebut, but there's really nothing to rebut unless you want to continue with something you forgot to say.
Did, um, did you have more questions about the garage dimensions that you wanted clarification on?
I assume that the, the modifications that you're requesting fit within your plan for the kind of cars that are going to be in there. What we're really saying in so many words is that before we get to no cars, we're going to get to smaller cars, and this is a step in that direction. But it does seem that that one car in the north won't be able to open its doors, so it doesn't have the eighteen inches that we normally want. But again, that's, that's your client's decision.
Okay, thank you. And we, we did work very carefully with Department of Transportation back and forth, and we actually hired a parking specialist, civil engineer, to do multiple diagrams of clearance inside the garage and backing up and working back and forth with Department of Transportation and taking all of your concerns into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Would you like to say something? May I, would you identify yourself, please?
Yes, Catherine Bidart. I co-own and co-reside at the property with my partner, Jean-Paul. I don't think this is working.
You're going to have to be loud.
Oh, it is recording. Okay, got it. Okay. So, once again, Catherine Bidart. I live at 411 Ocean Park Boulevard with Jean-Paul, and I believe a question came up about the impact of the ramp. I'm not sure how relevant it is, but I wanted to just present, if I may, the grant deed from the city for the taking of the ramp, which I have an electronic copy of. Oh, I don't know how to read these things, but I just had this here and wanted to provide the information should, should you want it. That's all. Okay, according to Kirk, who works with Lewin, it's about ten-
Nine point two-nine, nine point two-nine feet.
Okay.
What is nine point two-nine feet?
They took nine point two-nine feet of the front of the, of the front of the property when they did the widening.
I understand.
Would you like to see? Is that helpful?
No, that's really not relevant, but thank you very much for pointing it out.
Welcome.
Well, good, okay.
Um, I brought a PDF with a map because, notwithstanding how we feel about this project, I personally like it a lot, but because of the research I did when we did the Fourth Street Corner District designation, I didn't think that the findings actually reflected the conditions in the neighborhood and what happened to the property correctly, and I want the record to be exactly right. They can't open my map, but basically, the, the Fourth Street Corner District was established because its significant was based on the fact that Ocean Park Boulevard used to stop at Fourth Street, and in nineteen seventeen, seventeen, they opened it by removing two lots. And at that, that made everybody realize that the whole rest of Ocean Park and Sunset Park would be connected to the Exciting Beach Zone, and that was when development began. So those buildings in the twenties are really the pioneer buildings in that neighborhood. There were a few outliers from earlier, but east of Fourth Street, those were the new ones. So then, years passed, redlining, which, because people of color lived in that neighborhood, prevented investment in those properties, and then came this fifties and the eminent domain era when they took land and built giant new projects and tore down houses and built freeways occurred, and that was when they built the bridge, and, which is basically a highway improvement project. It was meant to connect the new freeway through to the Ocean Park Boulevard so that the people could sweep into Santa Monica, bypass that crummy Ocean Park neighborhood, and go to their shining towers by the sea. So the ramp really represents something that we don't love about Santa Monica's history. To build the ramps, they actually took the rest of the land, except for a little sliver, which I was trying to estimate based on, in maps that weren't really telling me. Now I know it's nine feet. I estimated it was roughly five feet. I knew it was negligible and that your parcel is really irregular, not really because of the ramp, but because it was an atypical subdivision of a large parcel that fronted Fourth Street. The other parcels that front the ramp are, except for two, are part, are parcels that front either to the east or the west and not north-south parcels. So they're actually not, there's only a couple that are actually irregular because of the freeway widening, and those are on the other side of the street. So this one really is a special circumstance. It still makes the findings, but I think we need, in our findings, to be accurate and not say that what's irregular about this property is because of the ramp. It's really because it is a subdivision of a larger lot. So I know I bring a lot of detail to these things. So-
Just to ask a question, is there like a neighborhood survey, survey that went through by a certain level of the Starboard Street Designation, and would that be a source of traffic or not?
Uh, there's maps and Sanborn maps that show this, and that thumb drive I stuck in the computer over there has a map that shows it too, but we can't get it out. I want the findings to give reasons that are correct and-
It's not impacting your opinion of the project.
It's not impacting my opinion of the project, but if we have findings that are based on assumptions and not what's actually there, then we are not doing our job.
Chair, I'd like to make a suggestion. I will move the three motions and the statement of official action, and I will ask Commissioner Fresco to work with Gina, I guess, on the findings so that they can more accurately reflect what our historian has just brought to us to encompass in the findings, because nothing she said at this stage would stop me from moving these motions nor from asking the rest of the commission to endorse the action this evening. But I think we need to move this along. So, I need a second. I have a second.
I will second the motion, but may I suggest that we make the approvals and do the SOA on consent at the next meeting when it's been updated with the approved findings? Is that...
Heidi, 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 would you like to speak?
I would like to understand exactly what the procedure is that is being proposed right now. Are you, are you continuing this item to the next meeting? Are you taking a vote?
Well, can we not approve the item tonight and you come back with a SOA that reflects what Nina's been talking about?
Well, I think, so, that's what I want to understand. So certainly you have made changes to SOAs and we have brought them back at later dates. That's not a problem.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
We want to ensure that you are not going to be basing it on evidence that has not been fully presented or reviewed by the commission this evening. So that's what I'm asking, because if the evidence that, that, if you are asking to have a commissioner work with staff outside of this meeting to discuss, that's actually evidence about whether or not...
Okay, well, then that's a problem.
Right. So that's why I'm asking the question.
What did you have in mind?
So, my understanding was that Commissioner Fresco was adding some useful historical information into the existing findings. Isn't that correct?
No.
All right. So, so hold on a second. So I'm still going to move these motions, and I'm still going to move, and we're fine with that. And Commissioner Fresco, if she has a problem with that, will now have to speak to it.
My understanding of the correction to the findings is that the finding for is not based on the existence of the ramp, but rather, you said it fairly clearly, that the finding is based on the irregularity of the parcel relative to its prior history. So if you can state into evidence what the finding should be, we can endorse that.
Can you do that?
I can try. It says, for example, in your SOA, in your report on page 27 under "front yard," it says, quote, "The subject property is one of four parcels within the study area and one of two parcels along the north Ocean Park Boulevard ramp with minimal front setback from the public right-of-way due to the loss of area with the creation of the city's Ocean Park ramps." That's actually not quite true. All of the, even the two properties that, only two other properties... Wait. On the, I, see, that's why I had the map. On the south side of the street, there are two tiny parcels which were cut off in the front, and one of them has a building that was originally a rear structure, and the property was cut about 10 or 15 feet away from that. I'm not really sure. I looked at Google, uh, Google Earth Pro and measured it. It said 15, but that could be inaccurate. But it seemed that that actually did have a conforming front setback. And then there's a new construction next to it that is close to the parcel line in the back, but that also seems to have the full 15 feet according to Google Earth Pro, which is not... So, that's one, and then on the other side, the courtyard apartments does have this one weird little extension that does extend into the front yard setback that was built in the late 50s sometime. So, so what I would suggest, instead of saying all those things, which Gina has something to say about...
Thank you. If you'd like, I do have the original 1904 subdivision, which created the parcel, which you're probably familiar with since you studied the Fourth Street Historic District, and it shows the dimensions of the parcel was originally connected to the one on Fourth Street. And then later, I have a subdivision map from the condo adjacent, which gave back square footage to this parcel and probably allowed that rear carport to be developed. Because there's a subdivision map that shows that that, both the Fourth Street and this particular parcel gained square footage in the back. So I have some maps that shows the subdivision maps.
Right. Well, what I noticed in the maps, the subdivision map, the parcel line for the property to the east on the other side of the alley, which is intact, is only five feet shorter than it was at...
I mean, is this, do we really need to include this language in the findings?
Well, I just feel like... If it's a basis for your decision, it needs to be included. If it's not a basis for your decision...
It is not, I can't see how it would be a basis for our, no. Why don't we just take it out?
So, can we just speak to, like, I'm hearing two things. One of the, it seems of my understanding is that there's a desire to include the basis of the finding is that part, you know, some portion of these properties was lost with the creation of that, and in addition, it was an irregular, the irregular lot lines were created from the subdivision. So both of those pieces of information are included in the findings on page 27 and 28. On page 28, kind of in the middle of the page, you know, it does read that the subject under a variance to allow increased parcel coverage, the third sentence, the subject parcel was further reduced to square footage and the parcel dimensions altered, one of them was separated from the parcel of the west, 25, 24, Fourth Street. So we did include, I believe, what is being discussed right now in addition to the loss of property because of the creation of the...
Right, 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 right. Nina, does that meet your needs?
I mean, I, I guess my point really was that when I read that the ramp is really was creating this non-conforming condition of creating hardship, I didn't agree with that. I think that the reason to have a non-conforming condition of creating hardship is because of the subdivision of the...
But Jing... Also just refer to the other page.
I know they're both in there, but it's really wavy differently, and to me, it's inaccurate.
What? Yes, if you can solve this, you will get a...
I would like to solve this. Can we please stop the sentence on page 27 after the words "right-of-way"? Because the, what is, what is, what is salient here is that there is minimal front setback from the public right-of-way. The reason for that is not, Commissioner Fresco is uncomfortable with blaming the ramp on page 27, and it's much clear, more clearly articulated on page 28 anyway. So if we simply stop the sentence after "right-of-way," can you live with that on page 27? It's in the, it's on the top paragraph, and the subject parcel is, this is how it would read. "The subject parcel is one of four parcels within the study area and one of two parcels along the north Ocean Park Boulevard ramp with minimal front setback from the public right-of-way, period."
So, we would, we would be eliminating the words "due to the loss of lot area with the creation of the city's Ocean Park ramps."
Correct.
We're fine with that.
I'm making sure that, because there's historic, because there's historical description on the other paragraph, which is helpful for the history of the project, but the reason that we're granting the variance here has to do with the absence of, absence of parcel. Why the parcel is missing is irrelevant.
So, that's acceptable to the mover, and I'm thinking it's acceptable to Commissioner Fresco. It's, in fact, it's close enough for us to do it. So, I'm going to now, wait, I'm going to now speak to this. So, the first thing is that issues of fact should be decided before we get to a planning commission meeting. This is not ultimately acceptable to me, that commissioners raise fact here. Let's have that discussion beforehand. That seems to be the only thing between us all now thinking that this is a big step forward and wanting to endorse the project, accept the variances, and move forward. Therefore, we should now move to a vote.
I just, thank you very much for sitting through this, and I want to tell you that I think this is an absolutely fantastic design and a creative use of a very small, complicated parcel, and kudos to you. It's a beautiful, beautiful design, and I'm very happy to vote for it tonight. So we're ready to vote?
I just want to say, after all the trouble I'm making, that I also think that it's a great design and that it is a really Ocean Park design, and that it's really compatible with the neighborhood and the adjacent historic district and the whole feeling and goals we have for making that horrible scar of a ramp a better place in our neighborhood. And I would like to come to the housewarming. I'll be staying in the guest room when my family gets tired of hearing my stories.
I second everything that Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Fresco said. It is an exceptionally romantic building, and we definitely need more romance in Ocean Park and in our city. I do have a question, actually for staff, if I can ask it. Well, I have to ask this question, and it's really kind of an equity question. The question is this. Someone comes to us with a small lot, smaller than its neighbors, and asks for a rear yard, front yard setback, lot covers exception, changes those two things, a hedge height, and one other item, garage shrinking. At this point in time, could we ever deny someone that particular variance if we approved this project? In other words, could we, are we setting a precedent that in a certain point will be irretrievable? And the only thing that I could say is, whatever they show up with, they got to be really beautiful, which they've done, but someone shows up with something that's not so beautiful and argues precedent, are we going to be able to deny it?
Every project is fact-based. Every project has to be looked at honestly. Every project has to meet the findings. This project meets the findings. And a different project, which may be prettier or uglier or different, will stand on its own...
Okay, I just asked the question.
Thank you. The applicant has a chance to rebut, say closing, whatever you want to say, if you want to say anything at all. I would suggest, we just not do that, but it's up to you. So we have roll call vote, please. And I'm the only one with a microphone.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes, with reservations.
Commissioner McKinnon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastner?
Yes.
And Chair Landers?
Yes. Thank you very much.
The SOA was in the motion. It was, I didn't read that.
So we need a roll call vote on that? Okay. All right, let's keep in mind, folks, that we have 28 minutes left in this room, and we have one more item. Actually, we have two, because I have to open the public hearing. The next item is item 5B, and it is, oh, good. What? Yeah, 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 that's a good idea. As soon as I get to it. Okay, 5B is the Proposed Amendments to the Text of the Municipal Code and the Bergmont Area Plan to Create a Use Classification and Parking Regulation for Food Halls and Permit Food Halls in Commercial Districts and Districts Subject to the Bergmont Plan. There's, would you like to say something?
Yes. Assuming we've all read this, and since there's some public comment, could I move that we waive the staff report and get straight to questions to staff and... Public comment? Is there a second for that?
Okay. Roll call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, let us go to public comment. No, that's the wrong one. Okay, Jackson McNeil is the first person, and then Dave Rand, and then Jerry Rubin. Did Jerry leave?
Hi, my name's Jackson McNeil, attorney for Harding &amp; More, Kucher &amp; Cozel. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the former post office building located at the northwest corner of Fifth and Arizona, which I know many of you are very familiar with. It's also a city designated landmark. We're requesting, as you probably read my letter, that no CUP be required for food hall uses in the downtown or in the alternative in commercial landmark buildings. As some of you know, the owner recently finished remodeling and facilitating the interior of the former post office building in preparation for future tenant improvements, and it looks great. And one of the first things they did was invite a planning staff and landmarks commissioners and members of the Santa Monica Conservancy to come check out the interior work, and a comment they received was, you know, wow, wouldn't it be great if we could put a restaurant use or food hall use into the city landmark? And although the client can't guarantee what tenant will ultimately occupy the building, they are currently marketing the building to potential tenants, including food hall use tenants, and the client believes that a CUP requirement would essentially kill that option. We think that that's a mistake. We think that food hall uses are a pedestrian-oriented use. It would open up the post office building to the public. We think this is a use the city is supporting in the Sears Building in a similar situation. And as far as we know, there hasn't been any problems with the existing food hall, the gallery on the promenade, and there hasn't been a proliferation of food hall uses that would sort of justify a CUP requirement at this time. So, we think food hall uses should be encouraged, especially in downtown, and we're asking that they remain a permitted use.
Thank you, Jackson. Commissioner Landers has a question.
So, currently, as I understand it, and staff will correct me if I'm wrong, we currently require a CUP for large restaurants. Is that correct?
Yes, that is a case, except for downtown.
Except for downtown. So we do not require a CUP for large restaurants downtown?
Right, it's, we do look at the...
In the staff report? I noticed that there's a difference. So the food hall that currently exists downtown was not subject to a CUP?
You're talking about the one in town?
Yeah.
No, no, that's the legal one that's coming past the door. That's when they're, like, since they're...
Okay. But elsewhere, we do require it. So I guess my, my...
So, so, sorry.
Yeah.
We require a CUP for large restaurants in the downtown on making, on water, and on water, so on the edge of the, but within the core, it's a different case.
So, do I understand you to be requesting that the food hall be treated like a large restaurant in the downtown?
Right, and food hall uses are currently treated as large restaurants.
And would it make a difference if it were a CUP or an MUP?
You know, we would oppose any barrier to a public serving, pedestrian-oriented use in this city landmark, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This, so, is there any nexus? I don't mean that in a legal way, but is there any relationship between a historic building and not requiring a CUP for a food hall, or is that just for your particular project?
I mean, I just think in general, in city landmarks, you want to expose the public to them as much as possible, and it's important to have, you know, public facing, public serving uses in city landmarks. And it's something the city should encourage.
Yeah, I just, I don't really see the relationship, honestly. Is it true that food halls are treated like, this is a question for staff now. Is it true that food halls are currently treated like large restaurants now? I mean, if they wanted to build this without this new amendment, could they just build it downtown?
Yeah, so I think one thing to clarify is this food hall classification is not meant to replace restaurants. You know, people are still, and people have been permitted to sort of, well, on inauguration or a series of small, you know, something probably good, you know, it may appear colloquial to be, to look like a food hall or a food court, but you know, under this, you're going to classify it as a large restaurant. This use classification is in response to sort of draw a desire to be something more flexible and different beyond just food, so that if you wanted to have music and retail and food and other things going on, it's not clear that there's a primary use of property, but it's there for combination use. That's what the food hall specification is going to be.
So then, if they wanted to come in with a food hall for the post office that did not include any retail or other things, could we just treat them like a restaurant and they wouldn't have to go through the CUP process? Okay, and so let me think about whether that needs to be clarified in the language, but maybe that's a... but maybe that's a...
Commissioner McKinnon?
So, Mr. Jackson, it was your company that argued vociferously to put up a fence, which was the alienation of that property. You knew that question was coming, didn't you? So, now you're down here asking for a relaxation of all the things that we have installed. How do you justify that? I mean, why doesn't your, why doesn't your client simply remove the fence first and then ask for it?
I'm so glad you asked.
I mean, that would go a long way to changing my mind, for example.
You know, if...
Given that we've been sitting here for six or seven years with that fence in place.
If the commission made it easy to have a food hall use that could maybe have outdoor, outdoor dining...
That would be our next step after the fence went.
Right.
So, what are you offering?
My client's absolutely not committing to anything. We're just speaking with a little bit of levity right now.
That's what your previous lawyer friend said some time ago, and there's still a fence there. When do we lose the fence on that property?
You know, the fence is, without throwing my boss under the bus, is, you know, perhaps under his ambit of knowledge if...
You really are struggling, aren't you? You have no answer to this, do you?
...fence further.
Throw in a post office substation and maybe you...
I thought so.
Okay. Actually, I was the landmarks commissioner voter for the fence.
Oh, no.
Because I understood the need for, back when it was going to be a high-tech, you know, expensive kind of thing. So, what Lisa was saying was basically if this came in as a large restaurant rather than a food hall, we wouldn't be discussing a CUP.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify that the distinction is, you know, for you to be like an individual restaurant, you have your own bathroom closet, you have a kitchen, your own chair, so we've had that question asked, I go, could someone tend to be like a big prep area and then a bunch of individuals serving? Well, that's not, you know, that's like a big restaurant, that's like a count that is, you know, under our old, or at least in definition.
Okay.
So, like, we've had examples of others, like on Wilshire Boulevard, where they want to be a series of small restaurants, and they had their individual prep areas, right? So, that would look at, you know, again, to the consumer, it looks like a food court food hall is permitted as the series of small restaurants. This is really allowing someone to do that sort of like shared prep area and like multiple vendors in a space among...
I understand, I understand.
So, that's the distinction.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Dave Rand?
Thank you, Jackson. I enjoyed that very much, watching that. Good evening, Commission, Dave Rand, Armbruster Goldsmith in Delvack.
I was going to say it was someone else.
Can't tell you how much...
It's up to you, too, don't worry.
All right, that's fine. I am here on behalf of Cadence Capital, the owner of the Wilshire Berkeley site and the 2919 Wilshire site, two properties that will be constructed and repurposed for multitude of restaurant uses, neither of which have walls in front of the street, I just want to point out and be crystal clear about that. Client would never deign to do such a thing, not to this commission, not to this city, Harding Lemaur, Kozel, Coach, but I digress. We read the definite, I read the definition of a food hall. I think it's a fine thing in general. I, my one concern on behalf of our client is that they have gone a long way down the process on both of their projects. Wilshire Berkeley, which is arguably a food hall under this new definition, it's a multitude of restaurants, there is some shared back of house space, that's been in the works for a year and a half plus. They have their ARB approval. 2919 Wilshire is a ground floor amalgam of restaurants with a childcare use on the upper level, the second story. That's had an AA on file. So, my, my request to the commission is to exempt pending projects that have had an administrative approval application or ARB approval that may get caught up in this, and, you know, my client's investment-backed expectations will be completely thrown out of whack if, after going through all this process, they get in plan check and are told they got to go back and get a conditional use permit because you're now, now all of a sudden a food hall, as opposed to a, a amalgam of, of ground floor restaurants that are now all under 2,500 square feet and none of which require any type of use permit. So, would request that the commission add that to the applicability language. I didn't see it in the ordinance. It's generally the practice of the city to adopt these things on a prospective basis, but it would, the clarity would, would help and I think be appreciated. And most importantly, I want to thank you, Kyle, for being so nice to me over the years, so few people are, and I always appreciated that about you. You stood out to me in that way, you, my mother, a couple others. And in all seriousness, you were always so warm, come to, talking to me at City Hall, and I really will, will miss you a lot. So, thank you, appreciate the time.
I have, I have a question, actually. When you talk about the multiple restaurants in this project you're referring to, are they actually individual restaurants, and maybe they share back office bathroom or whatever the heck, and that's the extent of their sharing?
There's some, there's some shared area, there may be some shared seating area. Wilshire Berkeley is more probably akin to the food hall use than 2919, but to be honest, it was a close call when I read the definition and, and thought out about abundance of caution, an exemption for pending projects either that receive the AA or ARB would be prudent.
Thank you.
But I think there's, there are some characteristics of each project that I saw in the proposed definition.
So, you raise an interesting question, which maybe we can come back to with staff, which is, before, imagine this didn't exist, you, you're fine, right? And this is meant to be essentially additive, and this is meant to be an addition of flexibility for use. I don't think it's intended to retrospectively create or retroactively create a barrier to a use, but as I read the definition in your description, it strikes me as this sort of opening language, right? Establishments consisting of three or more individually licensed buildings within an enclosed, licensed businesses within an enclosed building. What makes, what makes you think that your project, having heard Jing talk about, you know, what a large restaurant is, what makes you think that you'd now be caught up in it?
To the extent those spaces are sharing seating, sharing back of house...
Right.
You know, sharing an entrance, an exit. I, I agree, I have no doubt that this was not drafted to retroactively reach back and mess with two projects on Wilshire Boulevard. I completely get it.
No, no, yeah.
But, but just out of an abundance of caution, I think it would be...
I guess what I'm wondering is whether there's a, whether there's a language fix here that would...
I don't think there's anything wrong with the language of being proposed. I just think it'd be prudent to be clear that if you're a pending project and have received, filed an application or received an ARB approval, that you're exempt. That's all.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Rubin?
Well, thank you, Jerry Rubin, Santa Monica Commissioners. I'll just be brief, but first of all, since I've been on a long protest fest for a while now, anything with the word "food" in there sounds good to me. So, I was reading about this in the paper, and it sounded very creative and very unique, and so I wanted to come down and support it. I think more of these food halls around, it's more like a community kind of thing, where you're eating, going in, and different things, shared seating, it's, this sounds really cool. So, I know you don't have much more time, but I just want to say I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay. The issues before the commission, would anyone like to do anything?
I'd like to make the motion. You don't want to, you don't, can I make the motion for the purposes of discussion? I would like to move the staff recommendation with, with the exemption, make sure that we're exempting so that it's prospective, and, look for a second.
I'll second. I'd also, though, like to suggest that I think Mr. McNeil has a point about the downtown.
Yeah.
And that when we have these food halls in more residential areas, like the Pico area, that I think it makes a lot of sense to come for a CUP. I think, though, that in the downtown, to treat them like a large restaurant, and we are expecting a lot of pedestrian activity, and you're not going to be disrupting single family homes, I would ask the mover whether, well, ask the commission whether they are open to exempting in the promenade, the B.C. promenade and B.C. Second and Fourth Streets, and make that not even an M.CUP, but just permissive.
No, just to all...
Yeah, all of DCP.
Including, yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. That's reasonable.
So, may I ask for clarification, because I, do you mean to match basically what the DCP allows for large restaurants?
Yes.
Or just, oh...
Oh, I would. I would provide consistency.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's fine.
So, so just to be clear, that means it's a permitted use in the neighborhood village, the B.C. promenade, B.C. Second and Fourth, the transit adjacent, and the ocean admin transition.
Right.
But it would remain a CUP on Lincoln and Wilshire?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. So, despite the legal people that are here, it is of value that in the downtown, we change the nature of what we do and that we make it crystal clear that we have a lot of allowed uses down there, and one of them is this, and that there's no restriction to people coming in. We certainly want to make sure that in neighborhoods, that there's a different standard. On the other hand, we do have two projects going ahead revitalizing two spots that have been sitting vacant for, what, 10 years now, probably, in both of those, and have gone through various iterations, and they would both enhance those neighborhoods. So, the clarity is we want to move forward and enhance the Pico neighborhood, protect other residential areas, but ensure that the downtown does change in a very flexible way, and I think that we need to be adopting this removal of restrictions across the board going forward.
Do other commissioners have something to say?
I have a question, actually. Sorry. The parking requirements on a landmark, would the parking requirements for this food hall, isn't there some grandfathering clause so they wouldn't necessarily be subject to the parking requirements?
You're talking in relation to a post office?
Yeah.
Well, it's in the downtown, so there's no minimum parking.
Gotcha, I understand, okay.
My only question is, can we wrap the Bergmont into this motion, or do we need a separate motion?
No, you can wrap it all, it's a resolution.
Okay, okay, the motion's on the table, so let's take a...
It's a resolution.
It's a two?
It's two resolutions, we can do it in one motion.
My, our motion is for vote, is for vote, that's what you said, right?
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bonardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinnon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastner?
Yes.
Chair Lambert?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is item 5C, and it is the proposed amendments to the text of the code related to housing legislation in family daycare homes for consistency with state law, and I am opening the public hearing.
And I'm moving to continue the public hearing until March 18th.
I can do that myself, okay. And I am going to open, eh.
I'm going to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a speaker? Do you want to speak now? You can speak now and March 18th if you'd like.
I, I...
Okay. I know. You used all your energy on the last one, I know.
I already highlighted, definitely.
Yeah, well, you could just say script A, that's all you needed to do. Okay, where was I? Okay, we have opened the public hearing, and we are going to continue the public hearing until March 18th, at which time everything will happen. And at that point, we'll be in the civic auditorium, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, what?
Maybe they'll...
I wouldn't count on it. Maybe it'll get warmer outside. Okay.
But Kyle, aren't you going to come back for old time's sake?
No? Okay. Future commission agenda items. And I hereby adjourn the planning commission meeting. Thank you all, thank you, Kyle, thank you, staff, for hanging in there and the, living with the utter chaos that was tonight.